Mr. Johnson, we could not have made it through the last five months as well as we did without your leadership kind of guiding the ship. And so for that, the board just wanted to bless you with something. We know you spent a lot of time away from your grandkids and your wife to be with us. And so we want to make sure we can send you guys somewhere where you guys can kind of be together and not have any of these outside distractions. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate you and you all have a great time. But you still have to work here for one more month.
One more month.
Is there anybody else that would like to say anything?
Oh my.
Where are you going?
This is a gift certificate to Great Wolf Lodge that where my babies had been mourning the goat. Oh my goodness.
They'll have to get you on some of those water slides.
I'll send you a picture of that.
There we go. We need a video. Well, we sure do appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. So now reviewing the agenda next week, Ms. Kelly, you'll have our invocation and pledge. We'll approve some minutes in the agenda. We will not have a committee report. We will have quite a few superintendent recognitions, some real excited ones with all of the track and field students that made it to the state. We don't have any requests at this time, correct?
Yes.
Awesome. All righty, so at this time, we're going to jump into the superintendent's department reports. We'll start with Dr. Bowen with the support services report.
I've got mine coming up under old business.
All righty. Next, we have Ms. Houston with the business services report.
All right. The good evening. These are the invoices paid between $10,000 and $74,999 for the month of May. Protech Fire Incorporated from the general fund, $12,250 for the repair post indicator valve, and that's fire protection at West Side Middle School. Kevin Rosensky and Associates paid out of L4GA funds for $14,802 for professional learning, co-teaching, and assessments for grades three through five at Auburn Elementary School. Dell General Fund, $17,187 paid for a server for the district. Barrow County Board of Commissioners paid out of the general fund, $68,579 for November SRO services, that's district-wide. Barrow County Board of Commissioners out of the general fund, $45,001 for December SRO services, and that's district-wide. Frog Street Press, L4GA funds, $51,624 for 898 early literacy libraries for preschools. So this is really for our community district-wide. It's not, it's for before they get to us. CDW Government paid out of capital projects funds, $25,779 for 82 security cameras and wall mounts for Basset Two. Any questions? All right. Real quick, Moody's came out with their ratings on us for May 2024. Basically, this is Moody's confidence that Barrow County School System will repay our debt. And so we are graded at double A1, and that's because we have a strong economy here in Barrow County. We have growth. Our tax digest is strong. We have new businesses coming, opening up, homes being built. We also have good financials performance. We have good clean audits, strong internal controls and financials. And so we share this spot with, there's three other districts that are ahead of us, and then we share it with two others. So we're top six out of 180 districts in Georgia. So it's fantastic. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congrats. All righty. Now, next, we have Mr. Purno with system operations.
Good evening. I'll take a look at our construction projects and provide an update there. We've got photos there of Basset Two, and this will be the last report that we share on Basset Two. We pretty well got that wrapped up. We'll get furniture in place and get moved in over there. But it's been a great project. Rail construction has done a wonderful job. The school had a lunch over there on Friday for their teachers, and they got to take a look around, so that was a good send-off into the summer for them. Okay, and this is our performing arts center, which is moving along at a very rapid pace as you can see there. Structural steel, roof deck, slab, board, metal stud walls, CMU walls, overhead, rough end. All right, that picture there, I said, you can throw this picture in there. That was a meeting where we were planning for performing arts center, the audiovisual components, door hardware. So in that room, we've got Barrow County Schools maintenance, we've got Barrow County Schools safety, communications, and IT folks. We've got the door hardware representative, the AV representative from the vendor, of course, the contractor as well. There's so much that goes into this. We looked at the pretty pictures along the way, and you know, it's fun to do that. But there's so much that goes into this. And that was about 20 people, maybe one or two less than that, in that room piled up in there, and just kind of getting into the weeds, in the nitty-gritty in May for a building that will open up a year later. So at any rate, I just want to take a moment and say, that's really where things happen, and that's how things get done, and we get to the point where we open up a pretty building. Okay, so for the C-FIT Park, and this will be the last update on this project as well because finishing touches are being put on that project. And of course, the grand opening will be June 15th. We have another plug for that from 10:00 to 1:00 that day. Again, very little left to do out there. I will point out that the large concrete space that you see adjacent to the turf there, a pavilion will go there, a large pavilion. We won't have that in place by June 15th. I believe just about everything else will be all set. So very exciting. That's looking fantastic out there. We're looking forward to that opening up middle of June. Any questions?
On time and under budget?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Thank you so much, Joe. All righty, next, we've got Dr. Moten with teaching and learning.
We'll have a report under the 15th.
All right. Ms. Beggs, anything right now with planning and personnel?
Not at this time.
And Dr. Thompson, strategic information services?
Sure. You have the April communications report posted for your review. You also have the last day of school count. This is not a formal report, but I will point out we ended the year with 15,340 students, which is an increase of 3.1% over last year's last-day count. And that number itself is an increase over the prior year where we had grown 2.7%. So we continue to accelerate student growth, and we'll talk much more about that in a minute. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and hop down into new business and invite up Dr. Bowen to talk about the school year 2425 student code of conduct.
As you remember, a month ago, we placed the code of conduct up for review. It was through our SGT meetings in January and February, we got input from them, which is including that school staff, administration, community and family members, as well as teachers. We did not have any recommendations for change this year. We did not have anything that is forcing us to make any changes in the code of conduct. We will have to make some changes in our student handbook. That'll be a separate document in the next month. We'll get that updated for you and let you know about that. What we ask for tonight, though, is the superintendent recommends that we go ahead and remove the SY25 proposed student code of conduct from public review and approve the said code for next year. Are there any questions about the code of conduct?
Do we need to vote tonight, or can we add it to the consent?
I think you can, you can add it to consent. It's fine.
All righty. Everybody good with adding it to consent agenda? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, down in new business, we'll start off with Mr. Ayers. Transportation increase in tires.
One of the most exciting topics to talk about, tires. Anyway, I'll keep it short and simple. Imagine that. Anyway, superintendent recommends raising the expenditure cap on tires from $140,000 to $200,000 for Southern Tire Mart. No additional funds requested. Summary, due to an increase in cost and additional maintenance requirements for the bus fleet, we will exceed our spending cap of $140,000 for tires. Increasing the cap to $200,000 will provide enough contingency to allow for fluctuations in pricing and maintenance needs. Financial impact, additional expenditures will be covered by general fund from the transportation budget.
Any questions?
Jason, are you going to keep making a habit of showing up here every month and leaving more money?
No, I don't want to. I don't want to. That's why I specified this one was cost prohibitive. We didn't ask for more money. We should spend what we already got. So anyway, next time I see, I hope it's Christmas, and I can give out stockings or something, you know.
So are you telling us surprises or increases?
A little bit, just a little bit. Anything else?
We'll blame this one on the potholes.
There you go. There you go.
All right, consent agenda? All righty, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All righty, next, we've got Mr. Webb with the grounds care for fiscal year 2025.
All right. Greg's here as well. I'll go ahead and bring this item to you. We're asking the superintendent to recommend ACS landscape management for grounds care services beginning at fiscal year 2025. Yellowstone Landscape was approved to perform grounds care for our system in FY24. This is a year-to-year contract. We do not wish to renew that contract for FY25. ACS provided services to us from FY19, FY23. They did a good job, and they have agreed to perform grounds care in FY25 at the same cost as what they submitted to us last year. So the financial impact is $791,000. That was already approved by the board last month as part of the general fund budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I'm assuming you're pretty confident that they're going to keep up the quality of care for that project.
Yes, sir. We are. We've met with them and talked through it, and we feel comfortable.
So, Joe, refresh my memory. Last year, I remember they had been okay. Did the other company, was their price lower? Was that why we went with them?
It was.
On a one-year basis, just to see what kind of job they did?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
All righty.
Now, for this next item, C-FIT Park property, we're asking the superintendent to recommend amending the agreement with the Barrow Community Foundation to further define the terms of transfer of ownership of a portion of the property at C-FIT, which has been developed as a park. And so in effect, what we're asking for here is an amendment to the agreement that would push back the transfer of ownership of the property in front of C-FIT, which is, we looked at just a moment ago, which is now the park out front. We're asking for transfer of ownership to be moved or to take place on or before December 31 of this year. And for the maintenance and operation, the school system would maintain and operate the park over that same period of time through to the end of this calendar year. One other change in the agreement is that the provision for a board of directors to oversee and maintain the property, that would be removed because of this transfer of ownership. That's really no longer needed, that type of arrangement. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions associated with that. That's our recommendation.
Any questions? Consent? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Houston, calendar year 2024 mileage rate.
Principals, I apologize. Y'all are going to be in for a late night tonight. We have the mileage rate presentation. Policy, DFA is our local tax revenue policy. It requires the board to set a mileage rate upon the recommendations of the superintendent. All right. Is my clicker, yes. All right. So property taxes account for approximately 32% to 34% of the district's general fund revenues for 2023 and 2024. All real property and all personal property are taxable unless the property has been exempted by law. Real property is land and generally anything that is erected, growing, or affixed to the land. Personal property is everything that can be owned that is not real estate, which are boats, airplanes, business machinery and equipment, and business inventory. Vehicles are usually, that are older, that are still on the birthday taxes in the tax digest, and the contents of your household are not normally taxable unless they are used for a home-based business. The Tax Digest is the official list of each taxpayer subject to property taxes, together with the assessment, which is 40% of the property value and the amount of taxes. It's prepared by the tax commissioner based on information obtained by the tax assessor. Assessing values is defined as being 40% of the fair market value. The tax rate or mileage rate per Barrow County School System is set annually by the Board of Education. A tax rate of $1 mil represents a tax liability of $1 per $1,000 of a set value. The school system's mileage rate is currently set at 15.298, and that was for last year. Using last year's mileage rate, you, the Board of Education, have not yet set the mileage rate. So when these tax assessments went out last month, people were looking at their assessments, and it was last year's mileage rate. You haven't set it yet, so they don't know what their taxes are going to be. It can still be appealed by the taxpayers if they do not agree with the value, and if the taxpayer appeals and loses, their value will be frozen for two years moving forward, protecting them from any increases. For the Barrow County median school tax, the median, which is the middle, it's not average, it's the middle, value in Winder is $228,400 per the 2022 census. So it's a couple of years behind. The 40% value on that home would be $91,360. If you get a homestead exemption, you subtract 2,000 from that. So at 15.298 mileage rate, you would be paying $1,367 in school tax. So that's for the median value of a home here in, it's really Barrow County. I have Winder, but it's really Barrow County. I apologize for that, per the US census. Now, we can look at Zillow, which is not ideal, but it's really the only kind of other information that I have out there. The median home value per Zillow is $343,840. The 40% taxable value on that is $137,000, less the homestead exemption would give you $2,073.43 in school taxes. So this is just the median values of homes with some of the counties that surround us, Barrow, at 200, that I just went over, and then Clark is the next highest per the census, but per Zillow, they're a little bit lower than us, than Walton, Hall, Jackson, Gwinnett, and then Oconee County. This is just a little calculation. It's a general calculation of when the school system would break even, and this is just an internal calculation that we do. And we would say at a $275,000 home, you take the taxes out on that, the cost of half of a student, because we use half a student because we have approximately 32,000 homes and a little over 15,000 students. So we're just using half of a student to see when that home, an average home, would break even, and we see it at a $275,000 price point. And this is also just a quick fun calculation to look at how many years it takes to pay for a student being educated from a taxpayer's point of view. So if your average home value is $225,000, the taxes that you pay every year is about $1,496. You multiply that times 13 years. The cost to educate a student average over the past year is about $9,500. Right now, it's over $11,000, but before it was $7,000, so we're going to take the average there. So if you, the taxpayer, were saying that I've already paid for my student to go through the Barrow County School System, it would take 30 years to pay for your one student to go through the Barrow County School System. If you have two students, about 61 years. You have seen this chart many times. This is our tax digest over the years, but as the tax digest increased, so did our FTE. It went from, in 2007, 11,809 and 583 sped students to 15,331 and 1,398 sped students, so an increase of 3,522 FTE, which includes 815 of our sped students. We also increased our gifted students from 318 to 856 from 2010 to 2024. And our ESOL also increased from 181 to 527. So as our tax digest increased, so did our needs. This is a year-to-year increase-decrease in the digest. Ultimately, we had a 6.81% increase for 2024, and that was probably good news for our community after two years of over 24% increase. And this is a look at the actual PT 32.1, which is the 2024 digest from the tax commissioner. And we'll go into that a little bit more detail. This is what happened. The net tax, the net digest increased by 6.81%. The tax assessor reassessed property that was already on the digest for a net increase of $76,073,000. New real property or construction increased by $177 million. Personal property, mostly business furniture, increased by $16.3 million. And automobile, still on the birthday tax, increased by $3.3 million, and this is very abnormal, and it does not happen. So I checked with the tax commissioner to find out what was happening, because normally that number goes down, and she just said that it did increase, and maybe because of the value of cars, she wasn't real sure why, but she did double-check it for us. Exemptions decreased by $10 million. So this is what happened in each one of our categories for the past three years. Last year, agriculture, the first three columns, it decreased by 1.1%, probably because it was bought up to build subdivisions on. Our commercial increased 6.9% last year. Our industrial went down 5.1%, and then our residential increased 6.3%. All right. For those of you who like to dive deep into the digest, I present the tax digest over the last 10 years. The red box shows us the reassessment values changes from year to year, and then the new construction and real property that was added each year. So you can see, we get, the past two years, we went from 489 million dollars in reassessments, 795 million in reassessments, down to $76 million in reassessments this year. So we kind of gave our community a break. All right. Our tax assessor gets audited each year by the Georgia Department of Audits. They compare the sale of homes to how much that home was listed on the tax digest. So if a home sold at the same price, it was on the tax digest, for that year, the score would be 40. If you go below 35, you will get fined, the county will get fined. The DOA statistical standards are not met if it's below 35, and the county will be subject to several sanctions, which include $5 parcel per fine, forfeiture of all grant monies from the state of Georgia, Board of Education funding from the state reduced to equal the lower assessment value, and a complete reevaluation will be ordered to bring values back up into compliance. So we have age-based tax exemptions for this year, and they're the same as they have been for the past 20 years. This is the small print of that information. Our owner occupied principal residence, you get a $2,000 exemption. We have two local exemptions for seniors. House Bill 985, it gives a $20,000 reduction to taxable property. You must be over 62, and income from Social Security Retirement under $91,728, which changes every year, and all other income under $20,000. House Bill 1124, our extra local school tax exemption, is a $60,000 reduction to taxable property. It must be over 62, and all other income cannot exceed $36,450. Now, that was, this is the poverty level, $36,450. So because we haven't looked at this number, this $20,000 in House Bill 985 until last year, that poverty level is actually above what we have set for a $20,000 exemption. So I'm glad we looked at that, and I'm glad we changed it going forward if the citizens approve it. In December 2014, the Board of Education unanimously voted to vote this exemption so that senior citizens did not have to submit a new application every time their home was reevaluated, and other exemptions are available for veterans, conservation, income in the poverty level, et cetera. All right. And so the legislators approved in April 2024, and in November, our citizens will vote on these new exemptions. You initiated and approved and presented to the legislators in September of 2023, and what it looks like is age 62 to 70. If your earned income is less than $60,000, and you can get Social Security Retirement income of $91,728, so basically total income could be up to $151,000. You'll get $140,000 exemption, which equates to about a $350,000 home. 70 and plus, you can have earned income of $113,000. Again, $91,728, which changes every year for Social Security and Retirement, so almost $205,000, and your exemption will be unlimited. Our taxpayers still have to approve this, and it will go into effect in 2025. Now, here are some additional rules applicable to the above. Values of homes will be frozen when they receive this exemption. Seniors shall not receive either exemption if there are minor children residing in the homestead unless such children are the natural or adopted children of the person, or foster children under the care of the person, or children for whom the person has been appointed guardian. Exemption covers up to five acres in one home. These exemptions shall be in lieu and not in addition to any other homestead exemption, and exemptions will carry over from year to year until financially or family situations change, meaning age, income eligibility, presence of minor children, or a new application is filed. All right, back to 2024. A rollback is noted on the districts. The mileage rollback is based on reassessments of property that was already on the tax digest as of 2023. $76 million was added to our tax digest because of updated values. If we decrease our mileage rate by 2.261 to 15.037 mils, then we would receive the same amount of tax money as the previous year on property that was on the digest as of 2023. And then we wouldn't have to have public hearings, we wouldn't have to do an advertisement. I think we still should conduct public hearings, because this is such an important year for our age-based taxpayers, and I think they should know what's coming up to be voted on. This is our mileage rate history, so we're at 15.298, which is the lowest in 24 years. This is the mileage rates from last year of some of our districts that we're compared to in our surrounding counties. All right. This is our current general fund budgeted revenues. There has been a change. Remember when I was going on and on about how great the state did with giving us additional transportation funding? Well, they did fund more for transportation, but when the final state funding came out, it was $1.9 million increase rather than what the state originally estimated at $3.4 million. So our revenues were reduced by this difference. So we're looking at $205,534,852 in budgeted revenues, and we had budgeted $206,816. And this is our snapshot of the general fund tentative budget for 2025. Our revenue is $205.5 million. Our revenues, two-hundred-and-five-point-five million. Our expenditures, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-point-three million, four million. So we're estimating a deficit of fifteen-point-eight million dollars, and we're going to use fund balance for that deficit. All right, so here's the page that y'all need to focus on. This is our decision spreadsheet. The top line, we have budgeted sixty-five-point-one million dollars in property taxes in the budget that you tentatively approved, and a net loss of fifteen-point-eight mills. So if we look at the rollback rate, it's, the millage rate would be a fifteen-point-oh-three-seven. And this is this first orange line. So the estimated taxes that we would receive would be sixty-three-point-three million. That would decrease our loss by one-point-eight million. And then our net, projected net loss would be seventeen-point-six million, rather than the fifteen-point-eight million. So we wouldn't have to advertise a tax increase, and the taxes on a three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar home would be one thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. So there would be no difference. This is the rollback rate, so this is what we're going to compare the rest of the data to. The second line is our last year's millage rate of fifteen-point-two-nine-eight. That would give us a decrease of seven-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars to our budgeted revenues. It would increase our net loss, it would become sixteen-point-five million. And then the difference from the rollback rate would be thirty-three dollars per year for our taxpayers on a three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar home. And then the break-even point with our estimated property taxes. So if you guys decided to set the millage rate at fifteen-point-four-six-eight, that would give us exactly, or pretty close to what we budgeted in revenues for property taxes. And that would be a fifty-five-dollar increase per year for our taxpayers compared to the rollback rate. The fifteen-point-eight-two-four, the next one that's highlighted, that would cover the reduction from the state. So the state, they didn't give us as much in transportation. So this would cover that, that difference. And so our revenues would increase by one-point-four million dollars, one-million, one-million-four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. And our projected net loss would be less at fourteen-point-three million dollars. And that would cost our taxpayers a hundred dollars and seventy-four cents compared to the rollback rate. And then if you wanted to cover the whole budget, you could go down to the nineteen-point-two-six mills. But I am not going to recommend that, just wanted to give you the option.
Jennifer, how much do we currently have in reserves now?
We have about seventy million dollars in reserve right now.
Jennifer, probably a very obvious question, or probably obvious answer to this. Why are we comparing everything off of fifteen-point-oh-three-seven instead of fifteen-point-new-two-nine-eight?
It's basically how I have to advertise it to the community, and so
So if we stay the same?
The fifteen-point-two-nine-eight from last year?
Yeah. Then, then you do have to, I mean, we're going to do hearings regardless. But if it stays the same, you have to do hearings. If you roll back, you don't have to do hearings.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And so the tax assessor didn't really reassess that many properties. So most people, if we were to leave it at the fifteen-point-two-nine-eight, won't see an increase. There will be some that his property was reassessed, maybe they had an addition or something like that.
But we're showing a difference between the rollback number of thirty-three forty-one.
Yes.
How do you, based on our current two-hundred-million-dollar budget, what are you comfortable with the balance being?
Of course, it's all up to you. I would, I would like to cover that loss from the state and do the fifteen-point-eight-two-four. But we have a, we do have a good fund balance. The age-based tax exemption next year is going to hit us hard. Our health insurance is increasing, TRS is increasing, everything is going up. And so our reserves will be depleted, probably. If we continue our needs and covering our needs as we've been doing, we'll have a, we'll have a rough, you know, year six, seven, and eight.
So for like an extra eight dollars a month, around, whatever, you could cover where you're comfortable?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we did the rollback, it means our fund balance would be fifty-two million?
Oh, you're making me do math up here. Seventeen minus seventy, yes, yes, sir.
So that was actually, just to come back to that. First off, congratulations on the credit rating, that's no small feat. And I know it's more than just you, but it's a big, big part of you and your team. So thank you very much for that, which makes our borrowing costs tremendously lower versus what some of these other counties have to pay for their borrowing costs. So, thanks. And then also, what fund balance are you comfortable with? What fund balance would you like to see on a two-hundred-million-dollar budget?
The, the best practices is three months. So two-hundred divided by twelve would be probably around forty million?
So what was the number, two-oh-five, two-hundred-and-five million? So fifty-one twenty-five?
Fifty-one million?
Is best practices, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And if we take this down by seventeen, that only leaves fifty-three, and we've got exemptions. I mean, my problem is I don't see the expenses getting less every year, okay? And the state not only doesn't fund at a reasonable amount, but they also insisted that we spend two million dollars on curriculum this year, in addition to the other cuts that we've had from them. And so my concern is not so much this year. Obviously, we could do it this year, and we still have up to three million dollars in reserves. But next year, we may not have enough to cover standard practices, which would affect our bond millage rate, and would affect how we do business. And, and that would mean that we can't, you know, we might have to start looking at cutting programs. And I just don't feel like that's the time, this is the time to do that. And I, you know, I could be wrong, but frankly, if we just left it at last year's millage rate, if the difference is thirty-three dollars a year, that's less than three dollars a month.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, three dollars a month not, might not be a lot to the average taxpayer, but if you multiply that three times the number of houses that would affect us, it's going to affect our kids, our school systems.
You said best practices is fifty-one million, what's Houston's best practice?
Uh, yeah, I, I love, I love the fifty-one million. If, if I knew that, you know, the economy was going to stay strong, and I knew that the state wasn't going to continue to increase state health and TRS, and our growth is, it's really high, and we, and
We need new schools.
I just, yeah, we need new schools, and when we open a new school, they all need new supplies, and we need more leadership, I think, at the schools, school level. So there's a, there's just a lot of needs out there. We're going to have to start saying no more than we have. Esser funds have really spoiled us, and so we're going to have to make some hard decisions going into the future, for sure. So fifty million's good, because in the, in the school system, best practices is fifty million. Now, most governments, it's only two, it's only two months. But with the school system, we don't get funded real estate taxes until December. So that gives us about four months where we have to make it on our own, with just the state's support, which doesn't cover all of our teachers and all of our leadership positions. So I like to have that three-month buffer in there. And anything extra is also, makes me more comfortable where I can sleep at night.
So after listening to your budget presentation?
Yes, sir.
I feel like you've already, every department has already trimmed it down quite a bit. I feel like if we did the break-even, it, we're giving, we're not having to take anything away from our kids that they need. I feel like our budget right now is everything we need. None of it's glamorous, extra additions that we, could we do without? Yes, but it's, it's hurting the kids. And you're talking four dollars and sixty cents a month to stay, to go to the fifteen-point-four-six-eight, where we're breaking even and not having to take anything away from the kids.
The break, that fifteen-point-eight-two would cover that reduction from the state for transportation.
Got it, sir.
It's okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Ms. Houston, I guess one of the concerns I have is, you know, is not necessarily this year, but if that senior tax exemption goes in, somebody's going to pay the taxes. And the people that don't qualify for that, I'm, I'm afraid if we don't do something pretty quick, that we're going to see a massive increase down the road somewhere. What's your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. And then the state is putting in two other exemptions, doubling the homestead exemption, exemption from two thousand to four thousand, and then putting a cap on any reassessment growth of three percent. So that's, you know, right now, it's at six-point-eight-one percent. But now they're going to put a cap on it where no home will go over three percent for the Board of Education taxes.
I'm not going to excuse you to say this, but I, I think I feel comfortable with the information I have, that the state wants us to really tax our citizens.
We're using all our fund balance. One of the other. I just don't think people have the stomach to do that. Everyone's hurting, so there's, it has to be a balance here, you know?
Well, we also have to be forward-thinking here, too. You know, what we might be able to do this year, we won't be able to do next year, or the year after that, and we're going to be looking at tax increases.
We have more people moving in, so that's going to raise the tax base.
Sure, and we
It's not like a flat line, you know?
And for every, and for every student that moves in here, we have to have more classrooms, more students.
And that's like going back to where we might have to be adding in a bond, or
Correct.
Like, that's going to come at another angle.
Yes, that's right. So, you know, the, another, a bond property tax, which, you know, we haven't had to do here in Barrow County. So this would be newer for our citizens, too. That would be on top, because we can only go to twenty mills. And so then we would be having to have a property tax bond. We also are looking, you know, for our economic development. We have a great guy, Ben McDaniel, that's going out there trying to find industry, industries and commercial. Right now, we're at seventy percent residential on our tax digest, it's seventy percent. And commercial and industrial are twenty-one-point-eight percent. So we really need to get those numbers up with our commercial and industrial, and that, that will help cover us.
I was so surprised that the industrial actually went down.
Yeah. Do we know what that was? Do we know who left?
For me, for this commercial, I, I think the best thing worth it is industrial, as far as our tax base is concerned.
We need a seventy percent tax base. Historically, okay, you want to see a seventy percent tax base from industry and, from industrial and commercial, and thirty percent from residential, okay? Taxpayers have been having to pick up, because you work hard and own a house, you've been picking up a tab for the failure of this county to go out and bring in industry and commercial development here. And it's shame and disgrace.
From what Matt tells us, we know what's coming, just from what's already out there.
Well, yeah, and we're looking at, we're looking at, what, five thousand permits that have already been issued between the county and the cities?
It's closer to eight.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm behind, I'm two weeks behind, it's eight thousand.
Which, which will ultimately help our tax digest, but it will put more burden, still, still keep the burden on our taxpayers, for sure, our citizens.
We've had several, don't you have a magic wand somewhere?
No. When, oh, you have a week to set this, so next Tuesday, I will need to have your decision. Because we will then, June fourth, if you can approve a tentative millage rate, I can advertise and have my first public hearing on June twentieth at ten a.m. Our second public hearing at six p.m. on the twentieth. June twenty-seventh, we'll have our third public hearing. And then if all goes well, July ninth, we will vote on the final millage rate, get it over to the county commissioner so they can vote on theirs.
So let me ask a question. We're not going to come back this year and ask for a bond, like, to raise that also this year, are we?
I, I don't, I don't think we need it this year, no. I think, I think, I think our capital projects is, is, I think we got a good plan, good, good five-year plan. So I think we'll, we'll be good for a little while, yeah.
Because my only problem with all of this that I've heard tonight on this is I don't, I have a problem taxing people now because we can, because we don't think we can next year. I think we need to get what we need from them, but I don't think we need to be reactive, because we never know what tomorrow's going to be.
Things could change.
I, I, I don't, yeah, I have a problem taxing people because we can.
No, ma'am, I would, I wouldn't recommend doing that. I'm just trying to get our budget what we predicted, so that's all.
I think, I think the, we're still talking about, like, really just kind of covering the state loss, right?
That's, I, I would love that, that's my pie in the sky, but it's up to you.
And my thing is, I want to get from the state, I have no problem going back to my representatives and saying, hey, you told us that you were going to fully fund, and when you do this, that, and that, and make all these unfunded mandates. Y'all can go back and roll them back, but on the front end, you're telling us, oh, we can sit here and we can roll your taxes back, but we're going to push it on down to your local level. I have a problem as an elected official with them doing that. I have no problem telling them to give us that money back.
It, it could have been just a, it was an estimate that they gave us. Normally, their estimates are spot-on. In this year, for Barrow County, it, it hit us one-point-nine million dollars different. So it could have been somebody in the back office doing estimates, and it was just a wrong, they put in the wrong numbers.
Yeah, they did, didn't they? Jennifer, how much money did we have to take out of reserves this year that we didn't plan for?
Um, I, I think we, our budget broke even. We budgeted for two thousand and twenty-four to break even, so we were, we were good. We didn't hit our reserves, because we still had our Esser funds covering a lot of our costs.
Right, but we actually had to, I know transportation came back to us several times.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, ma'am.
See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. I can add that up for you and let you know.
Just get back to me on that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we added some things for retirement and all that, that's the general.
That's be for next year, mm-hmm, and that is already included in these numbers, mm-hmm.
Good to know.
And so we're, we're still not counting on midterm adjustments, right, in this budget?
Yes, I'm, I'm counting on two million dollars for midterm adjustment.
I know you are.
Mm-hmm, and that's already included, and so that's pretty aggressive. Sweating that one.
Hopefully do that. Okay.
Hopefully that growth projection will come true. All right, so y'all have your
Yeah, so we're going to, we'll talk about this, and any more questions before we move on?
What would make you happy? What, what do you think would be fair?
Nineteen-point-two-six-five?
No, just kidding. Let's, I, like I said, I would love fifteen-point-eight-two-four. I would still be happy with fifteen-point-four-six-eight.
Okay.
Wouldn't be happy with anything less, but I would make it work.
I just wanted to know.
Would make it work. All right, if y'all want to move on to the other snoozer presentation, other funds budget. All right, this is a long one, but I'm going to try to just talk as fast as I can. Y'all just stop me if you have any questions at all. All right, this is our other funds. So we went over the general fund, and we approved a tentative budget for that. I'll have a couple budget hearings on that, and then we'll approve that at the end of the month at the work session. We have to approve it by June thirtieth, so this is our other funds. So, school systems receive funding that is required to be used in specific ways. We like to think of those as buckets. Each bucket can pay for certain expenses, as you can see here. We have our general fund bucket, our state, that gives us state QBE funding and local property taxes. We spend this on teacher salaries, student transportation, instructional supplies, et cetera. We also have our federal funds. We also have our federal funds, um, and it's come, we get US federal grants out of that, and it's spent on specific grant requirements. Um, examples are Perkins funding, um, to be used to improve and expand career education and improve student academic and technical performance. Uh, we have school food nutrition funds, and that's USDA federal funds, also student meals um that students pay for, and we have spent, spend that on school cafeterias. And then we have our East Plus funds, our local sales tax, um, which are for capital expenditures such as school buses, building and renovations, new schools, facilities, and techni, technology equipment. So this is the list of our other funds, capital projects, debt service, federal funds, um, and then state funds. We'll jump into capital projects fund. Uh, this is a fund used to account for financial resources to be used for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of new schools and facilities, included but not limited to the new school building, uh, buildings, physical education, athletic facilities and equipment, classrooms, lunchrooms, gymnasiums, auditoriums, renovations and equipment for existing facilities, and the acquisition and purchase of any property necessary and desirable, um, both real and personal property, including but not limited to technology, safety and security equipment, buses, vehicles, transportation facilities and equipment. Our revenues are ELOS proceeds, interest revenues, and GSFIC state reimbursement funds. Our expenditures are building, renovations, um, salaries, buses, and technology. And we uh transfer out funds to our debt service fund to pay principal and interest on bonds. So you can see here, um, the ELOS proceeds, we fill up that bucket, and then we start spending money on um, on new schools, and we deplete it, and then we just start um, filling that bucket up again, and we normally have to have some bonds in there to cover us. So our estimated revenues will be twenty-two point six million dollars, and our expenditures next year look like they're gonna be around fifty-three point seven million dollars. Uh, so that is a net loss of thirty-one thousand. However, we have fund balance in our um East Plus funds of about thirty-eight point seven million dollars will be estimated. Some of the things that we'll be spending the money on is the Art Center opening in the fall of twenty twenty-five, BASSA two completion, renovations of existing buildings, um, future pods, maintenance projects, IT projects, buses and transportation, personnel, um, audit and administrative fees, debt service, and transfers to the debt service account for our bonds. Our debt service fund is a governmental fund used to account for the payment of general long-term debt. Our current debt is a hundred and thirty-four million, and uh, this is funded by transfers in from our capital projects funds, which I just went over, and our expenditures are uh principal and interest on our bonds. So uh, we should receive about nine point four million dollars in transfers and interest, and our expenditures are eleven point eight million dollars on our debt service for the year. Our federal funds will be allocated in June. These are all reimbursable grants and funds, so we pay the expenditures, then request reimbursement. This is another reason why school systems um need a three-month buffer, is because we pay ahead for um all of these expenditures that our grant covers, and then we have to wait for them to reimburse us. Um, projected expenditures and revenues are based on fiscal year twenty twenty-four actuals, because we don't have those numbers yet. And um, our federal funds, we normally receive about eight million dollars. Uh, this year it will be closer to the ten point eight million because of ESER, and um, it does not include school food nutrition in these federal funds. So Title One, Two, and Four, the purpose is to enable schools to provide opportunities for at-risk and disadvantaged children to acquire the knowledge and skills contained in the challenging state content standards and to meet the challenging state performance standards developed for all children. Our Title One A is improving academic achievement for the disadvantaged. Title One C, support migration education. Title Two, professional learning is transferred into Title One. And Title Four A is student support and academic enrichment, which also transfers into Title One. Our expenditures are additional parent support, instructional coaches, technology, family engagement, instructional materials, admin salaries, and tutoring. And then we transfer all these funds out into the consolidated funds, which uh gives our principals more leniency, and they're able to spend the funds um easier and not have as many restrictions. So it's looking like Title One A and uh is three point four million dollars in revenue, three point four million dollars in expenditures. Title One C, fifteen point nine million dollars in revenue and fifteen point nine in expenditures. Our Title Two is uh to increase academic achievement by improving teacher and leader quality. Our revenues are federal funds, and expenditures are transferred out to Title One for consolidated funds again to give our principals uh more avenues to spend this money. So we are anticipating four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in revenues and expenditures from Title Two. Title Three is, um, the purpose of Title Three is to provide English learners with the language support supplemental to the district's Office for Civil Rights, compliant English to s, to speakers of other languages, programs staffed and implemented with state and local funds. Our revenues, of course, are federal funds, and expenditures are for salaries, teacher stipends, professional learning subscriptions, translations, supplies, and equipment. We're anticipating two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in revenue and expenditures. Title Four A, part A, grants are intended to improve student academic achievement by increasing the capacity of states, LEAs, schools, and local communities to provide all students with access to a well-rounded education, improve school conditions for student learning, and improve the use of technology in order to improve that academic achievement and digital literacy to all students. This is specific in initiatives for student mental health and fine arts support, and a portion is transferred to Title One for consolidated funds. Our revenues and expenditures, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Title Nine A is the education of homeless children. Uh, the Barrow County School System adheres to the requirements of the McKinney-Bento Homeless Education Assistance Improvement Act of two thousand and one to ensure that all children and youth receive a free, appropriate public education and are given meaningful opportunities to succeed in our schools. Our expenditures are after-school tuition programs, credit recovery, transportation, school supplies, hygiene items, and emergency clothing. We will be receiving an estimated eighty-four thousand dollars in revenues, and we will spend that. Our special education program in Barrow County is child-centered education process designed to address individual student needs. Our revenues, of course, are um federal funds for um, for B, special education, and sped ed preschool and high-cost grant. Expenditures are parent support, support staff, shared services with RISA, nursing support, administration, equipment, and instructional supplies, a variety of learning platforms, interventions, and curricula to support special-designed instruction for students with disabilities. And we're receiving um three point six million dollars for um, for B flow-through, our high-cost grant twelve, about thirteen thousand, and our special ed preschool, hundred and one thousand dollars. Our vocational ed, um, also known as CTAE, Career Technical Agricultural Education, looks at new and innovative ways to prepare our students for college career success with a choice of thirty different career pathways, and fifteen career-clustered students can earn credentials and college credit in almost any career area of interest. Revenues are about about a hundred and forty-two thousand, and our expenditures are for equipment and registrations for conferences and events. L four GA is literacy for learning, living, and leading, an approach to improve literacy by unifying community-driven action with research-proven instruction. Georgia State Plan promises to improve literacy learning by establishing partnerships that utilize evidence-based practices with proven success for improving student learning, teaching learning, classroom literacy instruction, birth to grade twelve, um, for school climate, fa, family literacy, and community school partnerships. Our expenditures are for books for students, including birth to five years old in the community, professional learning for teachers, literacy interventions, minor renovations of media centers, literacy intervention, intervention materials, literacy assessments, digital platforms for student practice, and parent workshops. We'll receive about a million thirty-seven thousand dollars this year for L four GA, and I think this is our last year for this grant. SR three, the American Relief Plan, um, it provides education funding to state education agencies and local education agencies to support schools if they are dealing with the effects of COVID-nineteen pandemic. Twenty percent of SR three will be spent on learning loss. So our federal funds um this year will be one point two million dollars. Our total allotment for the year has been nineteen point nine million dollars, and we've spent fifteen point one million dollars so far. Our expenditures are for summer school, after-school, literacy materials, teaching and learning materials and subscriptions, human resources, um subscriptions, and indirect cost to the general fund. RT, J R R O T C serves as a character and leadership development program for our high school students. Um, retired army instructors lead this program. Our revenues are funded through the Department of Defense for about thirty percent of the cost, and seventy percent is supplemented with the general fund. And all of the um expenditures are salary and benefits. Project Aware is, uh, the purpose of this grant is to build or expand the capacity of the state in partnership with the state mental health agency, the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, and overseeing school-aged youth with local school districts to increase awareness of mental health issues among the school-aged youth, provide training for school personnel and other adults who interact with school-aged youth to detect and respond to mental health issues, and connect school-aged youth who may have behavioral health issues and their families' needed services. Um, our expenditures are all salaries and benefits, and we'll receive about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Project Aware grant. GNets, uh, the Georgia Network for Education and Therapeutic Support, is a service available within the continuing of supports for school systems to consider when determining the least restrictive environment for students with disabilities age five through twenty-one. The revenues are through RISA, and the Jefferson City School District splits these expenses with us fifty-fifty, because we um cover their students, and also transfers from the general fund. And all of the expenditures are salaries and benefits, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Our pre-K program is um the lottery-funded education program for Georgia's four-year-olds to prepare children for kindergarten. Revenues are state lottery funds and transfers from the general fund, and our expenditures are salary and benefits for teachers and parent pros, equipment, materials, and supplies, and administrative salaries. Pre-K is looking to um have revenue of two point nine million dollars, and expenditures the same. School food nutrition is um, its mission is to promote a successful academic experience and encourage a lifetime of healthy eating. The staff at each school provides every student with a base of nutrition education and meals that are nutritious appetizing and served by caring professionals in a friendly and cheerful environment. Our revenues are federal fan, funds and sale of meals, and our expenditures are salaries and benefits, food purchases, supplies, and equipment. We anticipate eleven point one million dollars in revenues, eleven point six million dollars in expenditures, so that looks like a net loss of five hundred thousand dollars, which will use the uh existing fund balance for school food nutrition. So this is a snapshot of all of the funds that I just went over. Um, the total is um fifty-eight million dollars in revenues, ninety-two million dollars in expenditures. Uh, we'll use thirty-three thousand dollars of reserve, and mostly that is for our capital projects, is the big lump sum of that. And um, reserves of forty-eight million dollars is anticipated, so that will bring our ruben, our reserves down to fourteen point eight million dollars. Uh, you'll vote on this tentative budget on June fourth. We'll hold two public hearings on the budget, uh, ten AM at the PDC on June fifth, and six PM on June seventeenth. And then if all goes well, we'll vote on the approval of all the final budgets on June twenty-fifth. And that's all for this one. Any questions?
Must be thirsty.
Okay, I think I have one more, and then I can get off this stage. All right, um, House Bill eighty-seven was signed by the governor in May twenty twenty-three. This bill gets a school system funding for the students that are enrolled in foothills that would be students of Barrow County School System. Barrow County, Barrow County Schools will then pay foothills the QBE funds we received for these students. On December fifth, the board approved a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for these services um with an estimated twenty-four point three four FTE. Uh, the March invoice came in, and the FTE increased by seven, uh, increased to seventy-eight FTE students. So the hundred and thirty thousand dollars is not gonna cover what we would need to pay foothills. So we are asking for an additional forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to be paid out of ESER funds for the final time um for these foothill students.
Do we need that denied, or do we need a vote on that tonight, or is that?
It can, it, I think the invoice is due end of June. We're good.
Any questions? Consent? All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
If there was, I wouldn't tell you.
All right, and last but not least, we'd like to welcome uh Dr. Moten and Ms. Phellos to talk about Wilco Printing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so this is about middle school and high school Open Up Resources. So as you know, we use the um Open Up Resources in sixth through eighth, and then also Algebra One, Algebra Two, and Geometry. We would like to, um, I wanna give you a little bit of background before I make the recommendation. So our math content specialist, Leah McConnell, reached out to three vendors, plus Open Up, to get quotes for the cost of a consumable workbook for each of our students in Barrow County for, in math class. Um, and so the, the companies were Wilco Printing, Athens Printing Company, ATP, and then of course, Open Up Resources. You can see um in the attachments that those quotes were pretty varied in pricing. Um, Open Up, which is the company that provides the resource, the free resource we utilize for curriculum, um, was at four hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Our math content specialists worked very, very hard, um, just like in previous years, to put all of that into a um, a format where we can take it to a printing company and have our own versions made that match the order of the units that our teachers teach, which is even better than them having to kinda go back and forth in the Open Up Resources. We do have to make some adjustments based on the curriculum that we utilize, um, and the how, how we align it to the standards in Georgia. So the superintendent recommends authorizing Wilco Printing and Science to once again print our Open Up Resource grade six through eight math workbooks, Open Up Resources Algebra One workbooks, Advanced Algebra workbooks, and Geometry for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and future years. Wilco is the same company that we used previously, and we were able to work with them to um have a price come in at one thousand thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for ten thousand five hundred workbooks, which is at a unit price of thirteen twenty-five. Do you have questions?
Good job.
All right, consent? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, guys, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or to, um, or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 If you guys wanna go enjoy some more cookies and punch, we will have you guys come back in here shortly.
Um, I like, um, playing with toys.
Um, I like my teacher.
I'm over the new friend, Pre-K.
Pre-K is out this world.
Sims Academy is a career-prepped school available to all high school students in Barrow County. Daily, Sims is filled with students taking dual enrollment courses, industry-specific CTAE classes, and Sims offered high school classes like construction. Pending the student's schedule, they may spend all day at Sims or utilize the BCSS organized shuttles to or from their home schools.
Sims is also home to many of Barrow County School System's unique programs, such as the Newcomer Academy, YES Program, and Step Program.
Sims was the first school on the Innovation Campus before being joined by Linear Technical College, Barrow Arts and Science Academy, and Austin Road Elementary School. It began with a mission that continues to evolve to ensure the success of BCSS students and our local community.
The YES Program at Sims is a class for.
The YES Program at Sims is a class for students with disabilities that are in their senior year of high school. The YES Program is partnered with the Goodwill Northeast Georgia, Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency and High School High Tech with the goal of helping seniors be better prepared for the independent employment after high school.
Goodwill staff works with participants of the Youth Job Training Program to set career goals and equip students with the necessary skills to enter the workforce. YES participants can earn high school credit for job readiness training classes and paid work experience. The YES Program has three phases. Phase one, one transition class at Sims Academy during the fall semester of senior year. Phase two, a paid internship in the spring of senior year if the student has proven to be motivated and reliable. Phase three, full-time job placement after graduation.
The Student Transition Enrichment Program, also known as STEP, is a full-time, year-long school-to-work transition program for students with significant cognitive disabilities who have the goal of supported employment after high school. The STEP Program provides supportive work experiences in a variety of community business settings as well as within common ground, the cafeteria and various CTAE classrooms. It also gives students the opportunity to practice self-determination, self-advocacy and independent living skills. This program has an application process and students must be accepted for the IEP team to consider this service.
Sims Academy students can build a strong foundation for their culinary careers through our dual enrollment partnership with Linear Technical College. Highly qualified instructors from Linear Technical College teach students in the career and technical education programs available to students through Sims Academy.
The Culinary Arts Program prepares students for employment within many facets of the food service industry. Students will obtain technical skills training focusing on food preparation, sanitation, nutrition, marketing, catering, management fundamentals and work ethics.
The Prep Cook Technical Certificate of Credit provides skills for entry into the food services preparation area as a prep cook. Topics include food services history, safety and sanitation, purchasing and food control, nutrition and menu development and design, along with the principles of cooking. Students who complete this certificate are positioned to earn several additional certificates that lead to a diploma or degree in culinary arts.
Sims offers students a hands-on opportunity to learn construction, carpentry and electrical fundamentals. The construction pathway consists of four courses ranging from fundamentals and safety to carpentry and electrical skills. These courses are designed to help prepare students for careers in the construction industry and many graduates find work in the construction industry after completing this pathway. The motto that students have in the class is that anything worth doing is worth doing right the first time.
Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in twenty seventeen with the purposes of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served speakers of many different languages from all around the world. Instructors work with students to develop their English and product support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with many unique challenges of adapting to life in new culture surrounded by a new language.
Sims Academy in Barrow County offers high school students a dynamic career prep experience with dual enrollment, CTAE classes and unique courses. Sims is a direct path to a brighter future.
Um, I've seen extremely competitive senior classes, but I've never been able to introduce three star students. Let's get started, I've got a lot to say. Appalachia's first star student is Ashton Graham.
I'll let you hold this while I talk about you, it's going to take you a minute.
Ashton is a four-year varsity soccer player and team captain. He is president of HOSA. He is vice president of the Science National Honor Society. He's also a member of NHS, Math Honor Society, Beta and the Student-Athlete Ambassadors. He's also participated in the past in Youth Leadership Arrow and the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. Since third grade, he's volunteered at Special Olympics and I'm sure he will again this year. He coaches at the Piedmont Soccer Academy and he's just a really super kind young man. He plans to major in biology and become a doctor and he's deciding where he'll start that journey, uh, soon. I think some scholarships are in his future. It's also really important to note that after all of that, doing all that he does, Ashton is also the twenty twenty-four valedictorian of his class. Congratulations and it's been quite an honor to get to know you. I'm going to let you introduce your star teacher.
My star teacher that I chose, I had all the way back in third grade. He was the first guy to actually challenge me in, in my intellect and gave me opportunity to do work for fourth, fifth grade, middle school, all the way back in third grade and, but it's not only that why I chose him, the main reason I chose him was the effect he had on me and then all the other people around him outside of like a school, uh, just academic setting. He, um, I had this one friend, I'm not going to say his name, but he, he was extremely smart as well, it's just he had some other things that held him back. And Mr. McCoy was the first person I saw that gave him the opportunity to showcase his knowledge in another way and he was one of the smartest kids at his, at the school. So for that reason, I chose Mr. Carl McCoy as my star teacher.
I don't know what to say, but I'll say, uh, um, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. It does mean a lot to be recognized and, uh, thank you Ashton, that was very kind of you to say. Um, I thought I'd tell a story about Ashton from the first day of school in third grade back when that kind of says it all about him, everything that his principal said comes out in this story. Um, forgive me if I get the dates wrong, it's been a decade. But, um, during our morning announcements, we would recognize, you know, okay, this, you guys are graduating in what year and date? We're all saying twenty twenty-four. So I cracked the joke, oh, you're making me feel old. Um, then I put a problem on the board and I said, well, I graduated in nineteen eighty-eight and how, how many years were passing between your graduation date and my graduation date? And the kids all puzzled and this guy here, uh, you have to picture an elementary school classroom fifteen minutes into the first day of school where it's all about chill out, take your supplies out and, you know, it's a big mess. And this guy, he's, he's got to solve the problem, so he tears into his pencil pack. Pencils fall all over the floor. He runs the sharpener, he sharpens it, he solves the problem, he's raising his hand and it looks like if I don't call on him, he's going to burst. Okay, so I called him and he, he came up with the right answer, of course. He said, uh, thirty-six years. And one of the other students said, so does that mean you're thirty-six? Or does that mean then you'll be thirty-six when we graduate? Thank you for that. No, for either one. And I said, well, maybe we can figure that out. And so this guy, he starts figuring it out and I said, well, some of the other kids have obviously figured it out too. And I said, well, Ashton, pick a couple of kids, be in a group with you, see if you can figure out how old I really am. So he picked two of his friends and then I went on to show the other kids how to do the first problem. And when we were done, um, I called on Ashton and said, Ashton, how old am I? And he said, can I let him say it? And it didn't dawn on me then, but the kid that he picked was one of his friends and this kid struggled a bit as I've learned over the months went by. And he let this kid say it and he let this kid explain. Furthermore, while that kid explained it, he went and picked up his pencils off the So it's, it was an honor to teach you and, uh, you left me with lots of stories like that, but that's the one that really stands out and good luck and you're going to make a fine gastroenterologist.
Being a star teacher in Appalachia years ago was the greatest honor of my career and so it was really exciting for me to see an elementary school, um, teacher chosen and Ashton was really clear about he, he started me off right and changed my education. So I'm really excited for the two of them. Our second star student is Nathaniel Maxson. I'm glad he's here and on time. When we were honoring, um, a lot of academic honors, our top ten, our star students, our Val, our Sal, um, we waited on him, he made a grand entrance, um, and that's who he is and we, we love seeing him in our hallways and doing all that he does, he's, he's an asset to Appalachia. Uh, Nathaniel was a member of the golf team for one year. He has played football for four years as a linebacker, right? All the, all the things. He plans to receive a bachelor's in business administration from the University of North Georgia and I think he'll do fine with that as he currently has a three point eight three GPA. Nathaniel, please introduce your star teacher.
All righty, welcome back, guys. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. Ms. Stevens, Mr. Bailey, all in favor? All right, motion passes. And then also I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the contract list as presented. Ms. Bailey, Ms. Bradford, all in favor? All righty, motion passes. If you will notice the upcoming meeting dates, uh, we've got our regular, um, board meeting next Tuesday, which will be the first board meeting with Dr. Ledup, so we're very excited about that. And then we've got quite a few of the public, uh, budget and military hearings here in June, so just mark your calendars. If there is nothing else to discuss, we're adjourned.